Let me introduce the United States of America. We are the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For being standing please. I'd like to have a moment of silence for honor my friend and former Alderman John Stube. We just have a moment please. Now we'll have a roll call.
Alderman Smith?
Yeah.
Here.
Alderman Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Donovan?
Here.
Alderman Jopust?
Here.
Alderman Rainey?
Here.
Alderman Prince?
Here.
Alderman Armbruster?
Here.
Mayor's here also.
Mayor's here.
Very good. Move for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second? Oh in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us down to our city administrators' report and we're going to give Jenny an opportunity to speak about COVID before we... Is that okay with you Happy?
No.
Good. I wish she answered.
Okay, I'm just going to read what we've... Kind of what we posted today with a little extra and then if you have any questions I'll be happy to answer them. So just to put things in perspective, in May, we had 27 cases total. June, we had 23. July, we had 43. And so far in August, we're at 196. Our active cases typically are between the 20s and 30s, sometimes higher, sometimes lower. Today, I think it was 35. The beginning of May, our vaccine initiated rate was 29.6%. Today, it was 39%, so we've gone up 10%, which is good. Vaccination proves to be the best defense against COVID. It not only lessens symptom severity, should a vaccinated person test positive, it is preventing death. I don't have a percentage of those cases reported since May of how many were vaccinated, but we do know it was a small number. We're going to try to calculate that in the coming weeks. But we do know that their symptoms are milder compared to those who are unvaccinated. We give Moderna to anyone over 18, Monday through Friday. Please call for an appointment. CVS is giving Pfizer to anyone over 12. You also need an appointment there. As always, please use common sense. Stay home if you aren't feeling well. If you think you have COVID, you probably do, so get tested. I can't tell you the number of people we talked to who say, "I wasn't sure initially, so I continued to go to work or go to school." And then a day or two later, they have yet another symptom, and then they go get tested. Trust your judgment. Testing is being done by appointment only at either of the walk-in clinics in town. As for those who test positive, we work up cases as quickly as we can, but we are also open to the public for all other services, unlike last year. So it does take us maybe a bit longer to get to people. Things have not changed since last go-around. Stay home 10 days if you're positive, longer if your symptoms continue to persist with fever. Your households and close contacts should stay home and away from others and monitor for symptoms for 10 days. The only contacts not required to quarantine are those who are vaccinated. They are allowed to work and attend school. It is encouraged they mask for two weeks and monitor themselves for symptoms. One other thing I thought was really interesting was I looked at the numbers last year. So August 2020, there were 60 cases. September was 117. October was 225. And November was 713. I didn't realize it got that high. I guess we were too deep into it to really pay attention. But then December, we fell back off to 348. January, 229. And then we kept steadily falling off. But we have never had a month where we didn't have at least 20 cases. Not even when, like day-to-day, we might have had like zero, but for the month, we still always have had 20. So COVID's been here since last March. Well, not wait, the March before. You know where I'm at with that. But anyway, I thought that was interesting. So questions? Anybody?
My only question would be, after you have vaccinations, will there be a requirement for a booster?
I think there will be. Right now, it's only for the immunocompromised, so if someone were to come in and say, "I want a booster," you have to sign this attestation form that the state's sent out. And basically, there's like five bullet points on it that basically, I mean, it breaks down what immunocompromised means. And it means kidney trans... Kidney transplant, I'm thinking about you. Organ transplant, undergoing certain treatments, just things like certain diseases are on there. But those are the only people right now who can get that. I would think that in the next month or two, it will probably be open to the general public. Whether or not it's going to come out that you have to wait eight months since your second shot, or if you can do like the immunocompromised and it just be 28 days, I have no idea what they're going to do. They haven't really said.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know, last year, at this time of stuff, it was also brought up to get the pneumonia vaccination. You know, what is the department's recommendations on those?
This time of year, I would get flu and pneumonia, just because it's also flu season now.
Flu season, is flu season now?
Well, it's coming up. We don't have any flu cases yet, but typically, October through March tends to be flu season, so.
You'll be providing that over to the health department?
Yes, yes, we will.
I mean, I guess it'll be drive-through then, too.
Well, yeah, we were going to talk to Felix about that, because we think we want to do a big one. We think a lot of people will come.
I think it's going to be awesome.
Yeah. I think last year, we maybe did 100 over there. I bet it would be bigger this year.
No, it's like just drive-through, that was awesome.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, we did mostly drive-through in our parking lot last year, so.
You have any recommendations that... For the city, anything? I mean, I know we're... Happy's going to talk a little bit about, since our average active cases are up, asking people to put on masks in City Hall. But do you have any other recommendations?
What we're telling people is it's up to your business, it's up to your place of employment, it's up to each store, what they want to do. I mean, the CDC put out there that, first they put out there, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, and then it's, well, now everybody should wear a mask indoors. And I think it not only confuses people, it upsets people, because you told them they could take the mask off, and now nobody really wants to put the mask back on. So falls onto personal choice on some levels, but then I just wish people would use common sense, and if they don't feel good, they need to stay home. But that doesn't seem to happen.
I encourage people to vaccinate. I think there's...
Oh, 100%.
You know, it's safe, it works, it's not going to prevent you from getting COVID, but it lessens the pain and suffering that you're going to move through. So I personally encourage all my friends and family to vaccinate. It is safe. And I know too many people now that are vaccinated and have had no side effects, and it's... It works, so.
I think our enemy is social media.
I agree, but it's all right.
And there's way too much false data. You can't fight it. I don't know what to do about it, so.
It's personal choice. I just, I encourage.
I appreciate the work that you have been doing.
Oh, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And you said to call the Health Department for a vaccine or one of the walk-in clinics?
So the walk-in clinics do the testing, and the Health Department and CVS do the Moderna and Pfizer. If they're over 12, or if they're between 12 and 18, they have to go to CVS.
Have any idea on the age groups? I know this 12 age thing came in last. Is there any numbers and stuff? I mean, is there a large amount? You know, we had a 10% increase, you know, in vaccinations. I mean, was there a certain age group or?
I haven't seen any data on that. I know that for St. Genevieve County, our over 65% population, they're over 70% vaccinated, which is awesome. But I haven't seen anything specific to 12 to 18. It just goes 12 to adult, and so I'm not sure the breakdown.
We're still lagging behind the state average.
We... Our county is lagging behind the state average. You know, we are, but I went to an administrator's meeting in Jeff City, and they actually called us overachievers. Because if you look at St. Genevieve compared to other rural towns, we're actually higher than a lot of the other. But I mean, it's still not where we need to be, so. We're trying. We're open till 8:00 tonight, giving shots, and I think we had 10 people scheduled. That's sad, but I don't know.
And you continue to offer to employers to come and give vaccines to their employees, to the larger employers?
You know, we had done that, but we haven't reached back out. It seems like some of the employers have just let their employees leave.
Oh, okay.
And come over, so.
So the hours are probably not an issue if you only had a handful that wanted an after-hour employee?
Right. I think if there was a company that really had a decent amount of people, we'd go back out, but, yeah.
The vaccines are still free?
I'm sorry?
The vaccines are still free, right?
Well, yeah. Yep, yep. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Pete, I want to expand on what the gentleman passed on. We've gone over that number 10, that was the metric I was looking for, the average number over the last seven days, and now we're at 11. So for the next two weeks, we're going to require masks for anybody visiting in City Hall, Welcome Center, any of our city offices. And then after two weeks, we'll look at it again and see. So that will put in the next board meeting, so we'll want people to wear masks then. But we'll just keep track of what those numbers are and hope that they go back then. But I don't want to do it every day we decide if we're going to wear masks or not, just get too confused. So the next two weeks, we'll level with it. Other stuff that's on the report at your desk or at your seats, new opening-closing dates for the municipal election this year... I'm sorry, municipal election next year. All of the filing period is this year instead of extending into January. So it's December 7th to December 28th, and then that's it. So it'll be a little different for those that are signing up. Jeff White will be starting September 7th as our new tourism director. He'll be around for the holiday, as well as Connie Beauchamp. She'll be starting up front as our front clerk and administrative assistant here at City Hall. Any questions? Anything else on the report? Okay, good.
Thank you.
Want to go ahead into your tourism report? So tourism, Welcome Center visitors, I wanted to give you the numbers over the last couple of months. 2,397 in June, July, 21st, 28th so far. We've got 1,464. 173 people came in and visited the photo exhibit at the Welcome Center. So that was surprising and a nice number to see. 736 people used it during Jerde Fett. Most of those were on Saturday. Our Google Ads, 1,482 impressions out there. 62 people looked at it and did something with it, and then 11 people actually took action and checked our website or made a phone call and did something. We've begun developing our advertising for the fall using grant funds from the Missouri Division of Tourism. This is one of the items that's been included in the budget, so that's the 93, 333 that you see for the total. It's $70,000 from the state, 23, 333 from the city. So we've already developed some ads for the Webster Kirkwood Times, Destination 618 Magazine. We're working on TV ads for Juan TV or KRCG, and still waiting for them to come back. And then the rest of these, we're just kind of in the middle of developing them. Our history, our slogan, "It's history is just a beginning." So that was one that Toby came up with, and we're going to keep going with it, because I think it resonates with people. Upcoming activities, movie in the park. Do you want to all let you talk about that? Art Walk is tomorrow. Foundation History Confederate Conference is coming up September 18th. Rural Heritage today, October 23rd. Palat Palauso on November 6th. So there's lots of stuff coming up. And then we get into Christmas. Any questions? Steve Wilson?
Evening, everyone.
Evening, Steve.
Give you guys an update on the waterline project, Forest Street. All mains have been installed, passed tests. Service lines are tied into each customer, and the asphalt patch has been replaced. We did have to replace the gravel a couple times, or at least put it back to the two-deck grade vents. Wiener Street, we installed a new main on Wiener Street, looping the system through that neighborhood there. That line had a one-inch line that ran up and dead-ended at the last house. So we ran a six-inch line through there. That project would have cost nearly $44,000 for that street. We've got it done for seven, so $35,000 there. That is also patched back in already. No more gravel washes during heavy rains. And it'll sit like that until Bowman comes and does the overlay. I did receive a couple of proposals from Cochran for the upcoming budget year, one being the electrical panel, which I have a meeting with them tomorrow at the plant to review some breaker information. And then the other one is for the possible waterline project for next year, including creek crossings, which I'll bring proposals back to the board next meeting. Let's see. Collection system, we've been working hard to keep the grease out of the collection system, lines flowing. I'd like to thank Dave Bova for the extra attention to the grease traps at the facilities when people move back into these restaurants. Without the support there, I wouldn't... They'd still be full, so. But other than that, the rest of it, a lot of routine stuff here in the report. Had some main breaks, some service line leaks, so. Any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening. We'll have a whole lot to report. We did have a vacancy that's now been filled. We've extended a conditional offer on that. Hired Ashley Bates. She's looking at starting September 8th. She came... She's coming from St. Francis County. She's been on the road for about five years over there, so anxious to get her started and familiar with the city. Finished up with Jerde Fett, everything went swimmingly. Don't have much else to report unless you guys have a question. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports?
Well, as I mean now, so we're supposed to... The Park Board was supposed to meet this past Monday in our regular meeting, but with the storms and everything. And then we're also short two board members, so we likely wouldn't have had a forum there either. So the meeting's been rescheduled for this coming Monday, August 30th, 7:00 PM at the Firehouse. So as I mentioned, two, short two board members. If anybody knows anybody that might be interested, pass them to the mayor or myself, and we can get them appointed, what to expect. Movie in the Park series, unfortunately, our movie was canceled again. The last time we attempted to do the Frozen movie on the Friday before Jerde Fett, there's supposed to be a rainstorm coming in. Everything looked red over us at the time, so we had to make the decision, and of course, it ended up being another good night to have a movie. So it's been a pretty rough start, but we're still committed to bringing this activity to the community, so we're continuing with the regular schedule. This Saturday will be the August movie in the park. It's going to be Spider-Man Into the Spider-Verse. And then September 25th, we'll have Wizard of Oz, and October 30th, COVID's Pocus. For the two movies that we've canceled on so far, we're still trying to work with the library to figure out when we... When and how we can get those in, because we have received some sponsorship through the community to host these, so we want to make sure that we do right by that. Other than that, movie events start... Activities start around 6:00, but the movie won't begin until it's dark enough outside, so probably closer to quarter after 8:00, 8:30. But that's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is not a committee report, but we discussed earlier in the week a need to maybe visit the stormwater situation and maybe talk about how we could fund, get creative with how we could fund some engineering solution, a holistic view of the city's stormwater situation.
Let's go ahead and take care of that in other business.
Other business, I bet you.
Yeah, let's do that, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Takes us to public comments.
I'm Bob Brownie, 498 Merchant Street. I just had two questions about switching a city works over to a private party. Why and will each person keep their same job and position they have now in the... With the city?
Ashley, you want to answer that question?
Answer the question, please. Yeah, Alliance has agreed to offer all of our current employees a position with their company, provided that they pass a drug screening, background check, and they have a valid driver's license, for insurance. Okay. And then as far as positions, if they can do the work, certainly.
Well, that's... My question was, they keep their position that they've had now with the city with the private company after they pass the drug test and all that. Will they keep their same positions now?
Worker, does he need work and doing what they're doing?
Yes.
My... Under our understanding, they will, you know, so.
And will they be taking over the cemeteries, too?
I think it'll stay the same. It's contracted out, the cemetery's contracted out.
Right.
So that'll stay just like it is.
Okay.
And that contract's good, but I think for three years, so that'll stay the same for three years.
Well, yeah. My concern was, I just don't want nobody losing their jobs. That's... Okay, thank you.
Good concern. Thank you, Bob.
And that's been the forefront of our discussions in committee meetings and bringing that here, is we are not after anybody's job here. We want to make sure that everybody has a position of employment at the Alliance, so...
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name's Dick Reminger at 21946 White Sands Road. And really kind of on the same subject, you know, we talked about this in years past, and I was mayor whenever we decided to go with Alliance for the water and the wastewater, and I think that was a good decision, because they brought, certainly brought an expertise to the party that we did not know. I always say, "We didn't know what we didn't know." And not that we didn't do a bad job, we just could have done a better job. And I thought, we all thought, the board thought, and I think it's proven, that they do bring that expertise with requirements and licensing and all those kinds of things to the city, that that's important. That is hard for a city of this size to keep up with. On this side, and these discussions happened in the past also, about having Alliance take over the public, whole Public Works Department, it doesn't make sense. I don't think you're getting the bang for the buck that it's going to cost you to do this. It... I called today to find out, you know, it's $45,000 difference between your budget and what you're going to pay Alliance to take over this department. And what actually, what are you going to get for that $45,000 that you're not getting today? I... It's a waste of money. If it was $100, it's a waste of money to me. I don't think that it makes any sense. I don't think they bring the expertise. Nothing against it, nothing against those guys at all, but I don't think that they bring the expertise that they do in the other departments, that they do to the Public Works Department. I... That's one side of it. The other side of it, I guess, is, and it relates to the employees, I do understand that they're going to be brought over making the same amount that they were making, is my understanding. I don't know all of the details, but is the insurance and the benefits the same as what they're getting now? You know, I know, obviously, the city employees are under lagers as far as the retirement plan, and that's, from what I remember, it's one of the best... It's one of the best retirement plans available, probably better than any 401K. Is what they're going to be offered the same thing? Is the health insurance going to be the same thing or better? Again, you're going to spend $45,000 and maybe be hurting your employees that you currently got. I... Again, it still goes back to, what are you going to get for $45,000? The other side of it is, is the expertise. I know of three things that I can think of in the past, certainly two of them, but recently. One, when I was still on the board, I think, was, you know, you talk about public works and what do you expect out of a public works department, to plow snow and mow grass and fix the streets and those kinds of things. But I know this public works department, I don't know if it's like all others, but there's certainly, they have done other things, a lot of other things that a lot of public works departments haven't done. And are you going to lose control over those things by contracting it out? And one, the public works department, I believe with the help of the police department, built this whole garage out here from the concrete on up. That say, what did that say, the city versus going out and contracting it out? The other one was the vestibule when City Hall was closed. Are those kinds of things like that, does Alliance have the expertise? And I know you're saying you're bringing everybody over, but if you go to them and say, "Well, we want this built or this built," and say, "Well, that's not within our scope of work. You got to go outside and contract that." Can they hang doors? Can they do electrical? They do this, can they do that? Is that within the scope of work that you guys have talked about? The other, which I was directly involved with, was the playground in Pinkley Park. I know it cost, because we talked about moving it ourselves, it cost $25,000 to move that thing. Would the board of, if that came up and you had that option of doing that, would the board have agreed to spend $25,000 to have, to put into the Park Department's budget to have that thing moved? I doubt it. Could they have done that? If you went to Alliance and said, "Hey, we got this playground, can you guys move it?" It was really because you had one guy within the department that helped put that one together originally, that had the ability to move it and then put another one together, had put another one together previously. But you wouldn't have had that. I don't think you would have had that, and I doubt that the board would have went along with extra $25,000, and the thing wouldn't be there today, which is probably, in today's dollars, is a $90,000 playground. So I... Those things, I fear that the city could lose control over those things. And, you know, what's to keep them from coming and saying, again, "That's without... That's out of our scope of work, we can't do that." But they could, or they couldn't, I don't know. But you're... You just, you lost that control over doing those kinds of things. The big thing is, though, you're going to spend $45,000 for nothing, in my opinion. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Any other comments? Any other public comments?
Can you get it made?
Yeah, employees can do that.
Yes, you can.
There's just a lot of unanswered questions and things, and this isn't just for me. I mean, I'm looking out for my employees. You know, current employees right now will transfer over at current wages that will have to pay 5% on their own insurance and 50% on the spouse and dependents. We had a meeting with them, and we asked for numbers, and they weren't available at the time, so... But, you know, like right now, an employee pays $100 a month for a spouse, an employee, and, you know, what's it going to be, $500, $600, $700 on their current wages? You know, I won't have anybody stay over that. I mean, they just, they can't pay the insurance and afford to eat at that rate. Our current CDL will not be effective anymore. We'll have to have, with the medical card and the DOT physicals, you know, who pays for that then? Is it up to the employee to go get their CDL changed and get the physical and the medical card? And then with that, on new hires, who will pay for the CDL? Currently, we train them, and we pay for their CDL so they can work for us. The biggest, from my employees, they do not want to cross-train. The contract states that you must be employed for... They must keep you for six months after the contract date. At that point, you know, they can keep you or not. If they don't keep an employee and they hire a new employee on, I mean, this is, it's just a thing for the current employees, you know, do they come in at the Public Works starting pay, or do they come in at the Alliance? Because I know there's a big difference. You know, if you bring them in at the Alliance, upper pay, and then my, you know, guy that's been here two years that still ain't... But, you know, like right now, an employee pays $100 a month for a spouse and employee, and, you know, what's it going to be, five, six, $700 on their current wages? You know, I won't have anybody stay over that. I mean, they just, they can't pay the insurance and afford to eat at that rate. Our current CDL will not be effective anymore. We'll have to have with the medical card and the DOT physicals. You know, who pays for that then? Is it up to the employee to go get their CDL changed and get the physical and the medical card? And then with that, on new hires, who will pay for the CDL? Currently, we train them and we pay for their CDL so they can work for us. The biggest, from my employees, they do not want to cross-train. The contract states that you must be employed for, they must keep you for six months after the contract date. At that point, you know, they can keep you or not. If they don't keep an employee and they hire a new employee on, I mean, this is, it's just a thing for the current employees, you know, do they come in at the public works starting pay or do they come in at the Alliance? Because I know there's a big difference. You know, if you bring them in at the Alliance, upper pay, and then my, you know, guy that's been here two years that still ain't making that much, is that fair to him? And the number of 45,000, I personally feel that number is going to be 55,000 because the city's got to buy out my department's vacation pay, which is going to be equivalent to close to $10,000. I know that's just a one-year expense, but that's 10,000 extra dollars this year. Uniforms, we won't have uniforms anymore. They give us a $350 a year clothing allowance, which is to buy them, launder them. Plus, we get $125 boot allowance now. So you take that out of that, and now you're down to two and a quarter to buy your uniforms and wash them. And, you know, the uniforms, having them laundered is keeping us from putting the grease, the oil, the diesel fuel through our personal washing machines. Why wasn't the park board ever advised or involved in this? You're taking over maintenance of their parks. They are a governing board. I mean, I talked to the president Monday night, and he had no clue of any of this going on. I mean, they should, it should have at least been advised of it. And apparently, this has been going on for quite a while because in their updated number from Alliance was one thing of a vacancy on my staff, and he's been here at least a couple of months, so, you know, there would have been time for them to have been advised. Everybody will lose their sick leave, their sick hours. I personally would be losing 720. And if there's money there to do this, to this extra $45,000, why can't the current employees be given a decent raise so they stay, so we're not constantly training people? You know, training, training people takes away from productivity, so. Because right now, the crew I have in is an excellent crew. If I could keep them, there, you know, there'd be great improvements. But everybody leaves because of money. You know, you can go to Walmart and Stock shelves and make more than you can make here in your indoors and guaranteed weather and, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Gary.
Paul, can I ask something?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. It's a public comment. He made the comment, there's going to be no questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? Bob, you need to come back?
Yeah, just one second.
Okay.
After hearing that, why couldn't this go up to the vote for the taxpayers? Let us decide.
That's a good, but we put it out there for the taxpayers to, that's why it's on the agenda, that's why it's put out there. We're trying to get, it's hard to get information out to the citizens, so.
Let taxpayers decide.
Can I add one more thing? Mike, would you consider tabling this until these new figures get out to the taxpayers? The difference in the prices now?
No, that would be up to the board. It's on the agenda tonight, so it will be up to the board to decide. Are there any other public comments? Very good, thank you. So at 6:33, we're going to do a public hearing. This public hearing will be held to allow citizens to comment on the property tax rates proposed to be set by the city of St. Genevieve, a political subdivision. The tax rate shall be set to reduce revenues with the budget for the fiscal year 2022 shows to be required for our property tax. Is there anybody for public comments here? No citizens to comment? So at 6, please. What did I say, over to 6:33? 6:34, we will close the public hearing. Pass out some information to the consent agenda. With that, I move for approval the consent agenda.
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Takes us to old business, bill number, the second reading of bill number 4445, Anordinance Approving a Memorandum of Agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated and Missouri Corporation to Modify the Initial Professional Service Agreement dated August 12, 2010.
Move approval.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Dunham?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Yes, or motion carries.
Thank you very much. Takes us to an action item to put COVID discussion back on the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, so it'll be carried on the agenda. Takes us to new business, bill number 4447, Anordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Levying a Tax on the Residents of the City for the Year 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move for second reading of bill number 4447.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
This is second reading of an ordinance of bill number 4447, Anordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Levying a Tax on the Residents of the City for the Year of 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Dunham?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Armbruster?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. Bill number 4447 now becomes ordinance number 4447.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of bill number 4448, Anordinance Approving an Additional Memorandum of Agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated and Missouri Corporation to Modify the Initial Professional Service Agreement dated August 12, 2010, Adding Streets, Parks, Management, and Personnel.
Discussions?
Pardon me?
Discussion?
Yes.
Where to start? I guess I'll start by trying to answer some of these questions that have been presented. So for anybody in the gallery or watching, I was on the committee making the statement nation, so that might be what you hear more from me than some of the others. I assure you, this is not a topic that we take lightly. Put a lot of homework into this and really trying to make this a fair and beneficial negotiation as we can. So just to dive into some of the questions that have been asked, I'm trying to keep off a running list, I'm sorry if I missed anything. If I miss anything, please feel free to ask it. If anybody else wants to chime in, definitely do. The CDL, Alliance will take care of the CDL. I was explaining to the employees, what was the date of the meeting that we had with the employees?
We went to go last Monday.
Yeah. So last Monday, we met with all the current city employees and Alliance. In attendance was the President of Alliance, and then Ron Smith and Steve Wilson, Steve being our local manager, and Ron, your regional manager. So they were in attendance to explain the benefits that the employees could potentially expect, or that they can't expect. There were some questions that the employees asked that Alliance will have to get back to them on, whether they have yet or not, I'm not sure, but I know Alliance is ready to answer phone calls if anybody wants to contact them. But Alliance will cover the CDL. And then, of course, cross-training, that will be up to the employee. They're not going to be forced to cross-train. You know, it's going to be, it's not going to be counted against them. At the end of the day, we have a Streets and Parks Department, and we have a Water and Seer Department, and we need the manpower in all of those departments. So if it takes six, seven eyes to fill the Streets and Parks Department, it takes seven eyes to fill the Streets and Parks Department. Letting go of one to let others do both jobs is not in anybody's best interest, interest. So in our negotiations, like, the manpower has been at the forefront of these discussions and making sure that a lot of our employees carry over and that, you know, their job can continue as expected, you know, whether it's patching potholes or storm pickup or mowing. You know, I realize there's a lot more you guys do, so I'm not trying to sell that short. Just some of these instances. I guess I'll just dive into the insurance clause, because that's been a pretty popular topic here in the last few days, that insurance. It's been pretty, pretty popular the last couple of days, I guess. Insurance is a bit of a tricky one because what might be a benefit on insurance for one person may not really be a benefit for another because we all have our different needs with that, from healthcare to mental health. With Alliance, employees can expect to pay more out of pocket for their coverage because they're paying 5% versus the city to cover 100%. But also for their dependent coverage, they'd be expected to pay 50% with Alliance. Whereas with the city, and maybe some of you on the, on the Health Insurance Committee can chime in here a little bit more about that. But right now, that's the direction that the health insurance is headed for the city.
We're projected to go to 40%. We're projected raises in between.
But also, those, that can change with the changing of a board year to year. So what this board decides and we're taking you to 40%, next year's board after the election, if they have the votes, they can, they can change that as well. If they, a future board a few years from now decided they want you to pay 100% of dependent coverage, that's still a risk of that future board. So there's no guarantees on, on what the city's health insurance is, especially too because insurance changes year to year. Your premiums can increase, your deductibles can increase, and that's all based on markets. And the board can, if there is a significant raise with the insurance negotiations for the city that year, that board can decide to change how much you are responsible for that increase. So it gets to be a tricky, trickier topic on the insurance, and I'll admit, it's not my driving force for, for whether I vote or not. Ensuring that they do have insurance coverage, ensuring that it is comparable to the market in other industries is something I'm concerned about, and I feel they meet those needs. But I don't feel that it's a deciding factor for myself to make it the insurance. I want you, I want the employees to have the best benefits possible, but I can't ensure that the next board is going to make that happen on the insurance front. If anybody else wants to chime in on that.
Well, we're not, this is, this is supposed to be a discussion with the board, not with the audience.
Right.
So I let it go, and I appreciate that because there was questions, but actually, we shouldn't have been doing that to begin with, so. And that's just the way it is, so. If there'll be no more questions back and forth to the board, it's a discussion between board members. So, but I do appreciate that because those were some questions that got answered. If you got to discuss it, Bob, with the board and not with the gallery, that's fine.
Well, and one of the points that did come out, I know there's this cost difference that we've all talked about and how we'll address that cost issue. I can assure you, nothing's been decided yet.
Right, I understand.
There's been nothing, these are all assumed things that are going to happen.
I guess the whole point is, though, if this is going to move forward, it's going to go from a first reading tonight. It's on the board. The board's going to decide whether this moves forward with a reading. And it, so, and if it moves forward, there'll be a second reading, and then it's written in stone, so.
Right, and I can, I can assure you, like Ashley said, I was part of that board. And if any of the board members here don't feel that we provided opportunity for all questions to be asked, you know, through meetings with Alliance, you know, and I'm sure the employees talk amongst themselves, so to think that this thing was brought up in surprise, I have to disagree with that. There was no surprise here and stuff, if you, but like I said, I talked with the other board members, most everybody had their questions answered, and I think in a very opportune, and more opportune time to do that than what happens in the real world. So I don't understand all of these, you know, questions being unanswered or not giving opportune time, but I think we all got our-
Well, I had some questions asked me that I had to refer to, to the, to Alliance, you know, from our employees, so I can understand it. And I, you got to understand, too, this, this is somewhat, you know, you're going from a, I think, and for the board is, we're going from a, a family business, more or less a city family business, to a corporation, and that's what Alliance is. That's somewhat scary. I'm sorry, I don't care who you are, if you're changing jobs, it's somewhat scary. And I appreciate the work that the board done. I have no problem with it. I was, I asked for this to be, for the public to be able to weigh in. We've had some public weigh in, some of the aldermen went out and talked to people. We got it on the agenda for our first reading. It'll only be one reading, and now there'll be two more weeks to, for more public to be involved in this, you know, so. And it's hard to get the public engaged. It is, because a lot of people don't know what's going, you know, so.
Joe, Paul, I didn't sit and wait for the people to call me. I called some of them to find out what their feelings were and stuff, so. And I think Ashley did, and I know Joe took several calls and stuff, so.
No, there's no, I'm not being, I'm just saying that, I think, on your point is, that we have, it was, it was a little bit of a surprise early on, but here in the last three to four weeks, it's not, we, this has been talked about, and I think we've, we've got a good discussion, and we've given people opportunity to speak. I have, I've had people email me and talk to employees and talk, you know, and, so yeah, it's been good, you know, so.
I want to put something out to the board right now and stuff here and go around, raise your hand or, you know, anybody who doesn't think Alliance is a first-class operation, I'd like to hear from you right now, because they are. I don't understand why they feel they won't be part of taking in, I mean, I seen them when we had the storm a year ago with chainsaws and, and they didn't have to do that. And you know what? We got billed zero for that. So to think that's not going to continue?
And on the other hand, too, we, they've worked in content, we do the same thing and don't do that many things, so.
Sure.
Yeah, it's good, and I, there's no, there's no doubt about that, that Alliance is, is a great company, you know, but, you know, they're a corporation, and that's my whole point of it, so. And I, listen, I'm not debating it.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to respond to Bob and some of your comments as well. When this discussion started, we, we heard what the committee's findings were, and we started out with two budgetary numbers in mind, and I want to be transparent to everybody. I feel like Alliance Water Services or Water Resources brings a whole never, another level of service that we don't have today. So, all things considered, my, my position on this bill would have been to support that contracted denim to enjoy that higher level of service. Not, not a diss on our current crew, not saying we can't get the job done, because we do get the job done. I'm saying it's a deeper resource, has more contact with, with more, maybe more engineering expertise, has a bigger employee base. It's a different level of service than we currently have. That being said, so I support what Bob's saying, but- That being said, so I, I support what Bob's saying, but I have to consider, you know, this is like, this is like looking at the baseline vehicle, and now we've added options to where now we've priced this thing up to $458,000. I have to respect comments from our former mayor, I have to respect comments from other people, where we've now priced this thing beyond our means. We, we can't, as this group, in my, in my view, we can't live beyond our means, and we're, we're going to attempt to do that if we, if we look further at this bill. So what my caution is to the rest of, of my peers here, we've never had to do this. We don't have to do this in, within a budget year, we don't have to do this within X amount of time, we just don't have to. We have budgetary numbers to work with from Alliance, we have our own budgetary numbers, we could go four months out and entertain this again. At this time, at $458,000, I can't be in favor of that. So just saying, to kill the bill, we, we don't need to do that, I think we need to table the bill.
Well, but I need to remind you, Mike, that number is still up for negotiations.
Yeah, but not tonight, right? Not in its current form.
Hold on, Ashley, you'll get to Bobby, don't you?
Yes.
Ashley?
So this increase that several people have mentioned, this has come in the last literally days.
Right.
And this is not what our committee negotiated originally, and it's something that I'm going to want to take back to the negotiation table and, and possibly go into closed session later to, to talk about that, because, yeah, this, this number isn't the sustainable number that we talked about. The original number we talked about was within our budget, and I think there's some discussions that we need to have to try to get that number back down with that. So, yeah, at, at this price, I'm, I'm, I'd be tabling it till we renegotiate. But kind of, kind of hitting on what, what you mentioned, this is not a diss, like, a diss to our current crew. Alliance does bring another level of time management resources, of training and safety resources, that would cost us a great deal to try to hire professionals to implement anything considerable to ensure this, to better ensure the safety of our employees, the training and quality of our, our, the jobs we perform, and to overall record keep our, our time management resources. You've heard me harp on the, the notion of work orders in the past. I firmly believe that, but, you know, in order to get those systems here in place, those, those systems already exist with Alliance, and be, would be a great benefit to this department. So that's kind of my, my stance on, on those few things there.
Anybody else have any comments on this issue?
Well, I'm hearing these two folks saying maybe we ought to table this, that's what I'm thinking.
I mean, I'd like to make that motion whenever everybody's done discussing it.
Do we have to do that by motion, or can we just simply show of hands?
If, if we need to go to a closed session with this, does that have to take place before the tabling?
No, we can table for discussion at a later date, we still have it on, we still discuss these three issues in closed session.
Today.
Correct, right. We're, we're not going to be, if you table it to a later meeting, you're not going to be able to take any action coming out of closed session or in closed session, because you table the action on the ordinance, so you can't come back out.
It'd have to wait to the next alderman meeting or something.
Because you'd be moving to table it to the next meeting.
But if, would that action include making a recommendation for changes to this contract before it comes back to us?
Yeah, you're not going to vote on that anyway. It's the direction to the administration.
Go.
One thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight yet that we did talk about the last time we discussed this, with all due respect to the former mayor and a couple other people that made comments, that they don't bring anything to the table for this department or, or whatever, however it was worded. It may not seem like it, and I'll be honest, I'm not totally made up my mind on this yet, but they do bring some tangible benefits to the employees in the terms of career advancement. There's really not much higher, or not much room to grow within the street department. It's not like you can move from the parks department up into the street department or vice versa, or whatever. We've already had employees leave St. Genevieve to further their careers with Alliance in other areas. So they do offer room for advancement for our employees, they offer cross-training across different disciplines. So to say that they're not really bringing us anything to the table, which granted, the cost factor is an issue too, you know, there are some other tangible benefits to our employees that need to be mentioned as well, and they haven't been brought up yet tonight, and I just wanted to restate those that we had talked about last time.
Bob?
Paul, and I want to add to what Joe was just saying as far as benefits, I mean, I don't know a ton about loggers, but I can tell you, anybody that's been a part of a 401K, and I do know from an Alliance employee that converted over and stuff in a very short period of time, his 401K with Alliance far exceeded his almost five years with loggers and performance and stuff. Alliance's company match, I'm telling you from personal experience, is absolutely unheard of. I don't know anybody in some of the big Fortune 500 companies that have that percentage of match for the money that you pre-tax put into it. I, I'm not sure everybody understands that benefit if you haven't lived it.
Right, I understand that, so.
You know, I know a lot of municipalities use loggers, and it's just kind of a given there, but there is another side to that and stuff that I don't think anybody has really taken the time to look at. And even on the insurance coverage, you know, we're looking at cost percentage and stuff, you know, and we all know what the city offered, whether we wanted to admit it or not, was unheard of. We had to head in that direction. We talked about cost amongst us and keeping costs in line, we weren't even looking at that. We have to look at that. We have taxpayers that have no insurance, we have taxpayers that are paying a lot for their insurance. Why should those people pay for something for somebody else that they don't have themselves? That's always been the question and stuff. That's hard for any of these people sitting on this board to take back to the people in their warrants and convince them that's the way it should be. But I know that's not a popular thing, but it's reality.
I got one thing to comment on your comment, is that you said that we hadn't had time, that nobody's had time to look at. You said that in the insurance end of, so that tells me that maybe we are rushing it a little bit too fast here. Maybe we need to table this and look at it and, and give people some time, and maybe, maybe that's what's going to take is to win some people over, I don't know, you know, so, but just a, a thought.
Sure, and I would have heard of that comment and stuff, but nobody has taken the time to look at the coverage either. They're looking at the cost out of pocket, but nobody, whether, you know, as employees compared to coverage.
And I, I don't even know if, if that was, because I got an email from a, a worker's wife today asking about the coverage and how much it was going to cost, and they, and they were unclear, so I, that's why I referred it to Steve, so I could clear it up. I couldn't answer, I tried. I emailed you, and I emailed Happy, and he emailed, well, I don't know. So I talked to Steve, and then I, I take it that Steve got a hold of her, because I hadn't heard anything back. So that, those are things that, that I'm just saying, those are things that, yeah, there's, it's, like I told you folks, it's, it's a scary proposition. If you're in their shoes, it's, I can understand where we're coming from.
I understand, I've been a part of those and stuff.
I've been in there, yeah.
No, I, I understand, but, you know, and it's a, it's, I, I'm just saying.
You know, and I've been very pro as far as bringing the people together and stuff to do this and stuff, over and above what most people get, you know, and I'm not opposed to looking any further, but at a point in time, it's time, yes or no?
Well, that's what we're going to get, but I think there's some more questions.
We had the president of Alliance here that day, the top dog in there.
Well, I would expect him to be here.
You know, and so, but I mean.
So I would expect that.
There were good questions come out of that, but now all of a sudden, there's more.
Oh.
Why, you know?
Well, I mean, it's just the way it is, you know, so.
You know, and we talked about the vacation pay, you know, I'm not sure that $10,000 figure that I heard earlier and stuff. We budget every year for labor, you know, in that labor is all of the accrued vacation pay that every employee has, so there's no additional cost, you know, as far as vacation pay. We pay that out every year.
Yep.
So.
Okay, very good, thanks, Bob. So we got to put some motion to table it, or?
We, we were advised not to do that, though, right? We, we were advised not to table?
No, I didn't advise that, but I.
Not, not prior to a closed session, is what I thought I heard?
No, I, I, if, all I said was if you're going to, if you move to table it to another meeting, then you're not going to take any action on the.
So we chance vote a yes or no on it tonight if we table it and go into closed session, but we can come back with recommendations for how we want to move forward?
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that if you're, if you're wanting to table it, you're not going to adopt it tonight, anyway.
Correct.
So you can talk about it in closed session with regard to negotiating strategy and vice and council, which is, the, the vice and council is on the closed agenda, so you can absolutely discuss it. If you want to take action on it, we can basically just move it to an agenda after we come back from closed session. So basically, you can just end this discussion, go into closed session, and then, and then resume the discussion of this topic, and then you can take action. But if you're going to, if it wasn't clear, if you moved to table it to another meeting, it's going to another meeting, and then you're not going to take any action on it today. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I don't hear anything, so I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
I'd second that.
Going, favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Is there any other business? There is other business.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
That's so long ago.
Yeah, so I think, I think there exists a report that I, I can't directly quote from, but it's dated 1993, that addresses the city's stormwater.
I think that was out there on, in your neighborhood.
It, it, well, it was, and so that, that's who I'm representing, so.
Yes.
And, and in particular, I want to make sure I, I mention, it's a business owner in my ward, it's shoe plumbing. If you didn't know, they, they had severe damage in their building due to stormwater, and we, we often talk about that, and then something else comes along, and we don't think about it until the next rain. My attempt tonight is to bring this to the board and request that we, we take some action to get it into a working session, agenda, or some, some recurring discussion, so we can visit what type of actions we can take, how we can, how we can fund, like, an engineering solution for the holistic stormwater issue that we have in the city, especially since we're building new buildings.
Happy, have you had any experience with this? I mean, to point us in the right direction, I mean, where, how do we go about this? Because, I mean, it wasn't only in mics, there were several ones, you know, and I know there's issues with crossing state highways and, you know, and all of that stuff, but I mean, how do we get started to find out?
So you've got two particular issues that were pointed out from this last storm in, you know, along 32, and then also on, on Market Street up by 9th Street. Now, if you're looking at a holistic type of, of program where you're starting from and checking to see what whole acreage is involved in the shed, shedding of water in your particular area, you're, you're talking a, a large amount of money for that, it's probably about $50,000 for the engineering. If you want to spot check it, again, you're going to have to figure out where the watershed, or iron engineer, figure out where those watersheds are that feed into those different creeks or, or, or areas that the stormwater runs off, and then spot check those, that would probably go cut in probably less than half. But it depends on if you wanted, if you wanted to look at them, like, as a whole. And then you've got multiple jurisdictions, mode on for 32 and 61, Corps of Engineers, if we get onto a tributary, and if there's anything that's being fed from the county, talking to them, see if they're willing to participate or at least listen. So, I mean, that's, is that giving you any tidings or just confusing?
I was going to say, I suggested you lessen that, though, and continue to issue building permits puts us in a kind of questionable space in my mind.
Well, if you have any new subdivisions, you would end up going with a detention basin, so it would cover that, that particular area. So what you're looking at is what's existing. You have, you have two problems, one, old system, two, rains that were not anticipated for these systems. And if you get four inches of rain in 45 minutes, it's not going to handle it. Even the new detention basin isn't going to handle it.
Right.
It's going to hold it for what our code is, which I think is 20 minutes, one inch rain, or something, something along those lines. And then there's an overflow. So if you get that large rain, you're still going to have an overflow coming from that detention basin, because then it's not supposed to back up into that subdivision. If you want to not have that problem, so, you know, you've got to take that into consideration. So I don't think, you don't want to stop construction, and we don't have, you know, we don't have a lot going on at this point, so we don't have to worry about that, but we just need to figure out where you want to start. Now, it is, it has been cleared with Treasury that stormwater is part of what they will allow cities to use that money for. So we can incorporate that with the other things that we want to talk about with other things, and start the engineering processes. We can't just fix it. We have to figure out where the water's coming from, and if there's maybe a way to detain it ahead of time, or if there's something that can be refashioned somewhere along those creeks.
I mean, isn't there anything, you know, on a state or federal level? I, I remember a few years ago when 32 went underwater, I, I, somebody showed me, and I don't know who put it up, but there was already an existing map of that watershed area that was done by some agency, you know, that said this is how many acres, and under, you know, however many acres, so much rainfall is going to produce, you know, so much water and, but I, I don't remember what agency that was that produced that map, but it was already in existence. I mean, can we look into it?
We could find it, but can we interpret it? I mean, I don't know, I can't look at a map and say, yeah.
I mean, with all the stuff that went on here years ago with the levee and stuff, did they just look at the river, or did they not take the tributaries, you know, the north and south Havering Creek here, and there had to be some studies.
There was a stormwater mitigation plan that was part of the levee project.
Oh, was there? Well, it's there.
So that may be somewhere on paperwork. It's not in my office easily accessed.
Something we can look into, or? At what? I mean, I, I agree with Mike, I mean, it's, you know, with the amount of stuff that's been built up, you know, and I know over near area and stuff, when that building was built, there was nothing else along there, you know, and look at, well, even the number of houses in this subdivision that have increased, and parking lots, and duplexes and apartments, I mean.
Joe Prince, you have the floor?
Well, I mean, my place of employment floods every time they have rain in the forecast, and we had probably four inches in our building as well. We've been told multiple times that it's the shopping center's responsibility, it's their storm, cause, or their storm system causing the problems. At what point does it not be the landowner's problem and it becomes the city's problem? I mean, where's the fine line there?
It's, it's out of city right of way, so the, the question is, what do we maintain? So we maintain, because the city took over for, in Point Base, they took over all of that creek area behind those houses.
That's Mike's lake house. Behind Mike's lake house.
And took over the sinkholes, so we have that responsibility. But if it's running on, say, Ron Klein's property, we really don't have that responsibility. It's up to the homeowner to maintain that and do what they can. But we have a crossing under, under Market Street, oh, that is our responsibility, because it is our street, our, our system. We have not taken over all of the stormwater, we haven't taken the creeks, we own property along the creeks that, that is. Ashley?
So, on that, so if it's a road causing runoff onto a homeowner's property and then flooding. So I received an email from one of my residents who actually lives on my street. Uh, Scott Street is obviously really high on one end, and it's actually high on the other end as well, and kind of slopes down toward the middle. So it gets hit from both directions on the water runoff. Um, and so one of the residents that lives right at that point, uh, sent me some photos. I think some of you might have even seen them on Facebook circulating around. The water builds up there, and then because of, I guess, the, the way the properties are, that water pulls off from the road into their property close to their home and floods their, their, their homes and everything, so. Um, that's why I was getting ready to pass along to you, but I don't know, is that the city's responsibility to fix that road?
We'll look at it, but that, also you have to remember that the subdivisions had to put in a stormwater collection path. Because it couldn't just be, you know, left somewhere. So they may have created these ditches that go behind houses, that go between houses. Doesn't mean it's the city's unless we adopt it.
Yeah.
And until, and so I'm showing that we took over those systems, and most of the time, I think they just adopted the, the final plaque. Until we adopt something like that, that's not our responsibility.
Part of it is a legal question. Generally speaking, if you divert natural rainwater flow from its natural course, you can be liable for damages to the downstream people. There's limitations on that action, especially if it's been in place for many, many years. So you can't just not give anything about it for five, or 10 years, depending on the political section limitation. So if we have a road that's been designed out there and been in place for 10 years, we're not gonna be on the hook for it, so to speak. Uh, that's not to say we shouldn't address it, uh, if we can, which is what Happy's talking about. And you've got to have the opportunities from, from engineering companies to do storm, stormwater surveys and that type of work to study the, the nature extent of the problem. And part of that is due to the stormwater work. And then, and then there's gonna be, uh, paperwork to pass it out if you do that. But the, the liability of the city is very limited. If there's a developer that has caused this, this funneling of water and diversion of natural water that's on the developer, even if it goes across or under our streets, it's, it's really the funneling and diversion of natural water that creates a nuisance or a cause of action that somebody can separate and then be a private suit to it. It was relatively.
That'd be interesting to see how that happens in that subdivision, because looking at that, and I'm no engineer, it looks like that whole subdivision, part of that where you're at is in a bowl. And I'm wondering, where is the stormwater going from, from the bowl, and where's it go to, because it?
I haven't figured it out either, because. So I'm toward the.
Through the backyard, over, over on the, the other side of Lynn Drive. Down from Doc White's office, and then it hits a box culvert and goes out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's all over the property.
Wonder where that wind goes there.
Brains into Valley Spring.
And then, and some of this stuff, this, this flood we had Monday, it was a, it was a I had never, I've been in town here 14 years and never saw something like that, that fast. And it overwhelmed the system, like Happy said, even. And, and if your home is in a bowl, it's gonna collect water in it, because it, it can't run off fast enough. It's, it's coming in, but I agree with development and, and on your point with the retentions. But if you can retain, just think about it, because, and, and Steve talked to me about when they built the hospital over there, they built a retention pond over there when they built the new parking lot. Well, he said, I'll bet there is not a dime bit of water in that retention pond. Well, I went over there and took pictures. There is. It was full, and it was doing its job. It was holding. That amount of water did not make it down to his place to make it worse. It was bad enough anyway. So I think you gotta look at that. We gotta look at where the firehouse is over there.
That, that detention was held, that held too.
Yeah. Problem is, the problem was, the system was overwhelmed. The pipes going across, taking it down. And if we would've had bigger pipes everywhere, somewhere, especially in your neighborhood, it would've, something was gonna flood down there. Was probably, or it was gonna come up, and then it was gonna reach this level because it couldn't get away, and it was just gonna back up. So they gotta stop because it would've backed up, it'd have been backed up all the way across. And I, I think that what we need to do is, is to look at some, appropriate some money, find some money to do some engineering and start looking at this, this problem that we have. The problem we, we had was said, there'll be a new board here, and there'll be four, could be four new members on the board. And it's, it, it happens and you change, and then it gets dropped, you know, but somewhere along the line, it's gotta be, you know, we gotta move it along. You know, so it's tough. It's expensive, so.
So Happy, basically, if we have, you know, our, our city streets don't produce that much water runoff. You know, it comes from other private properties and stuff onto our city streets. So where does the buck stop? You know, because a lot of our streets, there is no stormwater. It's basically, it's a paved street to the property line. Uh, there may or may not be sidewalks or curvings, but there isn't stormwater facilities there and stuff. So if that water runs off of people's property onto the streets, runs down in this dip and floods something, is that our liability? I mean, how?
Not with that size of rain. If we intentionally did something with the street and aimed it to somebody's house, then.
Correct.
Otherwise, the stormwater, it's a stormwater collection system is our streets. If we don't have a, a drain system involved included with the streets, that's your collection system. I mean, that's all you've got. So it is doing what it's supposed to.
Has a collection.
Can't handle the, the heavy, heavy rain, so. I mean, that's.
Like, in my neighborhood, uh, the houses directly behind me, uh, my house is on a hill, and actually all my water comes down into their yards and stuff. But for years, there was always a, a channel that ran between my yard and the neighbor behind me and all that. But over the years, I guess erosion and stuff, it filled up that channel a little bit. And so the water started cutting across the slope of the yard awfully close to a couple of the neighbor's houses. Neighbor up the street, before he sold his house, he said, well, we need to get this fixed. And he had somebody come in and they just basically redug the old channel out. Luckily, they didn't send me my bill or a bill for it, but.
Well, I would, I would.
Some of those homeowners there did, uh, pay their share because it's actually on their property. But whose responsibility in those situations on a neighborhood like that, that has, I mean, the upkeep on those built-in channels, if they're not kept up over the years, is that the city? I mean.
It's private property.
So that's, at, at that point, it's private property.
Anytime you go into all these creeks in here, and we always, you go in there and try to clean them out. You gotta get ahold of DNR. You shouldn't be in those. It's, it's all, you can't even go in the creek unless it's on your property. And that's the problem with, it's, it's just like down on Washington Street, there's a big diversion, an old ditch, the old, actually the old channel that go, it used to be, it used to be the creek, and they moved it on the other side. That creek is actually owned by the, by the residents that live on that thing. Now, the creek across there, that's, it's, it's DNR you have to deal with. Martin should always give me trouble for being down in those creeks.
Is it appropriate to ask David a question during this, or are we just discussing this ourselves?
This is David.
Both of them.
He's not here. Well, he's here. Dave, a few weeks ago, I talked to you about in the area of Shoes Plumbing back behind there because of the complaint I got from a, a apartment owner back there. Is that related to this problem that Shoes faced this time?
When the duplex was built, uh, numbers were ran for stormwater, and it wasn't going to produce stormwater that would need the size of the stormwater detention basin that's already there. It was, it was calculated to be able to hold the extra water, if you're talking about the duplex that was built back there.
Well, this was the existing duplex that's been there for a very long time. But I guess where Butterfield and everywhere else meets up there, there, there was a discussion about the water pooling there.
There weren't any changes to that over the past four or five years, except for the duplex that was built on the back of Bowser Funeral Home. And when that was built, calculations were done, and the water detention pond there would still hold the additional runoff.
So my question now is, where did the water come from that affected Shoes? Did it come from the back or from the front?
Naturally, what it does, it's coming down. It's the whole brush, your subdivision comes and feeds it. All the firehouse, it comes from the hospital, it comes from, where it's not going towards Allegiant, it's coming this way. And then it comes out in front, and it goes across and goes into stormwater.
But I mean, like, in front of the car wash and all that, there's those stormwater.
Right.
Some of them are exposed, some of them go underneath.
They run down here.
That channel there, is that where the water went into Shoes, or did it come from the back?
Yeah, it just backed up. The water couldn't get across the highway, across 32, in a, in a box culvert that goes on and goes on behind Mike's house and gets, goes into the ground. So that's what happens. And if you fix, and I've talked to, we've talked to MODOT about it. I was down there personally with, with MODOT and the Shoes. That was two years ago when it flooded. His property usually on a two-inch, a heavy two-inch rain, he said his dad used to tell him that to get it. Heavy two-inch rain, you've got a possibility of flooding. You know, and it flooded before. We went through this, pictures, and now it, it was just worse because we had the four-inch rain, and it flooded. And it back, it was worse than I ever saw it, because it was already back, it was, it was backed up to, to the parking lot of the funeral home. Their marquee was underwater. Never, never saw that before. But there was a lot of water coming into the, into that hole, and the highway dammed it. So you can, the fix is to alleviate that is either to hold more water back, put a bigger pipe under the highway or a couple pipes, but when you do that.
Problem's down the line.
It's gonna send it down the line. It's gonna, it's gonna back down. Because the pipe, to get there, there's a pipe going underneath Highway 61, under McDonald's, all the way across, under another roadway. And heaven forbid that pipe ever collapsed.
So, Paul, what was MODOT's response to?
We got, and MODOT's response to me, uh, Brian Okenfus, from the last time, they are, they're starting, they have an engineer looking at that. So they're doing something, but it takes forever to do it, but it's in there right away. David?
Yeah, I mean, we met two years ago with Brian Okenfus, Steve Schu, and the powers that be. The study was done, I don't know how many years ago, probably five, 10 years ago, called for that water to go straight under Highway 32. If you go out there, it has to make a turn and then another turn.
That's right.
That's not gonna alleviate the whole problem. It could help, but Brian is privy to and has that information.
Yes, yes. They're working on it, so, but it's, it's, that's, that's their problem. But when they do that, I've got news for you all. We're gonna have.
It's gotta go somewhere.
That's right.
Good conversation.
Yeah. But I, I guess, what, what you're asking is, do we, do we pursue this with, with engineering? Please.
Well, I think it's an honorable discussion to see if we want to spend the money for that, for that type of purpose.
I'll have to see what the state comes back with.
Are we gonna look for that stormwater mitigation plan as well?
I will have to do some research.
Yeah, I think, I'm interested to see if we have that.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Perfect.
So. Hey, uh, former mayor, wasn't there a storm, stormwater mitigation plan?
Yeah, it was just really whatever fed the two creeks.
Right.
And I mean, now you're, you're talking to the watershed.
Okay, so, yeah. I thought it incorporated all storm.
Okay.
So, uh, do we, going into closed session, do we want to wait? Well, if there's a motion to go into closed session, you had something to discuss with the board to do, requested at the last meeting. With the, uh, Main Street? Oh, yes, yes. That's actually, yes. Uh, so I assume somebody's gonna make a motion to go into closed session, discuss possible litigation and legal, legal counsel, unless there's some other, other business.
I, I have no other business. Anybody have any?
With that, I motion to go into closed session.
For litigation and?
For litigation and personnel. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ray.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes. Very good. We'll clear the gap.
Supposed to vote on the night, so we're gonna have a budget after we have the vote? That's not make sense.
We don't have a budget.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got a budget, but I, you know, I don't wanna bring it to you.
Which means we'd have to vote on it twice during the second meeting in September, which I don't like at all. I would rather us have a special meeting on a non-Thursday night than put, continue to put this off.
I'm game.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Not a Thursday, so.
I like non-Thursday.
I'm only off on Thursdays, but most of them.
I don't know.
But that's fine.
Tuesday, the 31st is the fifth Tuesday, so I'm guessing there's not a meeting?
There is a meeting for Board of Justice.
Oh. About Monday, the 30th.
For the Board of Justice.
That's right. That's next Monday already.
I got a meeting on Tuesday.
It's difficult.
I do.
I do.
All right, so.
I mean, parkour meetings are supposed to play off how much time do we need? Because I can probably do six o'clock, and we can try to keep it to an hour.
Right.
And I would just have to leave and, and the firehouse.
Monday good, next Monday good at six o'clock?
Yes.
Yeah. So next Monday, we'll have this court session next Monday at six o'clock.
Better work.
Is that the Board from City Hall too?
Oh.
Yes. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all we need.
All right.